I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission meeting for January 2nd, 2025, at 6:59. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
President.
Mr. Stokes?
Here.
Ms. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Naylor?
Here.
Mr. Sasek?
Here.
Ms. Yulinski, here. Chairman DeHunt?
Here. Before we move on to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask for a moment of pause in dedication to President Carter's passing. He was very active in the Michigan community, and after our moment, Ms. Holman will tell you about something that the city will be doing. So, let's give him 30 seconds at least. I think he deserves that. Thank you. Ms. Holman?
Mr. Chair, Habitat for Humanity is going to be bringing a door to have, to put in the lobby of City Hall similarly as they did when Rosalynn Carter passed, for people to express their sentiments. And then, I believe that door will be hung in their headquarters. But it'll be here Monday through Thursday until the funeral. And they will be having a service on Thursday. We'll have more details at the beginning of the week. But please stop by City Hall and express your condolences or thanks.
And there will be something on the city website, I hope?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for that. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Can we get a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve tonight's agenda.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. We'll move on to the first hearing of the public. If you have anything that you wish to speak on, you have three minutes to do so. Please write your name on the piece of paper that's at the podium. If you are here to speak on the matter in regards to public hearing of receiving comments on rezoning request for a cell tower at 17020, I ask that you hold those comments for the public hearing. As we go forward, podium's yours. Does anybody wish to be heard?
Gary Meyer in East Point. I just want to wish everybody a happy, safe New Years. And she got everybody here, that's a good thing. And wish everybody well and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Happy New Year, everyone. I just had a couple of questions. I had emailed Ms. Holman and some of you. The minutes that you have in this agenda packet from the October 3rd meeting aren't correct, aren't what was actually said at the October 3rd meeting regarding the special land use for Keystone Auto Clinic on Grashit. When Commissioner Moody read the motion, she had taken out the entirety of Condition 3, which talked about designating public parking spaces, because I think you guys had decided that that would be covered with allowing the businesses around there to be able to park in their parking lot. And then for Condition 4, you, the word "operable vehicles," or actually, in the motion, it says "or vehicles," was removed because you had agreed that the motion was to apply to inoperable vehicles only. When this came in front of the City Council, that third condition that Planning Commission had removed was added back in there. And, you know, I'm not, again, sure how everything works with the Planning Commission, City Council, City Planner. My understanding was that City Planner works with the business and comes up with a plan, which is then presented to the Planning Commission. And then you make a motion on it to approve or deny it or add conditions to it. And then that motion, as you spoke it, gets sent to City Council, and then they decide if they want to make any changes to it. But in this instance, you very clearly wanted to strike Condition 3, talking about public parking spaces. Yet, when it was brought before City Council, that condition was back in there again for them to rule on. So, again, I don't know, you know, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions of you, but if maybe you could explain what the process is, because it just seems like City Planner has one vision for a project. Planning Commission had a different vision for this project. And City Council ruled on City Planner's vision, not your vision. And if that's normal procedure, you know, that's, that's fine. But I just, if you could give me some clarification, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the first hearing of the public. And we will move on to approval of the minutes. Ms. Smith, we had some changes to the October minutes. Would you please elaborate?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, the concerns that were raised were correct, the meeting minutes for October 3rd that were included in your packet did have an error. It was not the recommended motion. So, the, I did already present with each commissioner this evening the corrected draft of the October 3rd minutes. However, based on my notes and the recorded motion in our discussion, I do believe that Condition 3 was included, should be as presented this evening, should be an improvement to the community. The project must designate at least 10% as public parking spaces. But if that's not correct, then we can discuss whether that is what I believe the corrected motion to be. And then, the change to Number 4 was reflected here as well.
Is this a situation where maybe we needed to table this particular one, have somebody review the meeting notes, the meeting itself, to make sure that the record is properly reflected?
Unless anyone feels differently, I do believe these are the corrected meeting minutes.
And have these been uploaded to the city website in replacing the ones that were in error?
They will be following tonight's meeting.
Okay. Mr. Myers, do you have any concerns about this?
No, I don't. But if you're, with the supervision favors that we review the minutes, I mean, they, we recorded.
John, I think we need to get you to talk louder or turn your thing on. Oh, and I got a text message that the streaming was not working, by the way.
Oh.
That's not you, though.
Thanks. If, as long as the City Planning Commission doesn't have a problem, I think we have reviewed the recordings and the minutes and the notes and corrected them. But if you'd prefer us to look at it one more time, we'll be glad to do that for you. But we wouldn't put it on the webpage until it's approved by the Planning Commission.
I was absent from the meeting. How do you guys feel? Are you content with the adjusted minutes here? Or would you like something else?
I'm okay with the two hours.
Mr. Broll, I personally would request a review.
Ms. Yulinski?
I would request a review too, just so everything's cohesive.
All right, it's going to fall on you, Mr. Stokes, because, all right. So then we'll table the, those minutes for October 3rd until the next meeting, pending a review.
Mr. Chairman, there should be a separate motion.
Okay.
If the October minutes are going to be tabled for the next meeting pending a review, then there should be a separate motion for that.
Can I get a motion?
Would you like that motion? I'll make that motion.
We have motion. Do we have support?
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
I'm going to abstain since I was not on the commission at that time.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
I will abstain as I was absent from the meeting. Moving on to the approval of the November meeting. Do we have a motion? Actually, we have a correction.
Mr. Chairman, yes. If I may, for the November 7th meeting minutes, it was presented that during the training, the calendar for 2025 was submitted, but in the minutes, it reflects 2026, and that needs to be corrected to 2025.
So, besides that change, does anybody see anything inappropriate? Can we get a motion to approve the minutes for November 7th, pending the change that Commissioner Sasek has presented? I'll move to accept the minutes as amended. We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chairman.
Yes.
I supported the motion, but I was actually not in attendance. I'm supporting the change. Is that what, supporting the minute?
Yeah.
The change, because I wasn't, okay.
All right, we had no December meeting, so there's really nothing to approve there. Unless somebody wants to approve a council meeting. Otherwise, we will open the first hearing of the, or public hearing, I'm sorry, to receive comments on the rezoning request for a cell tower at 17020 East Ten Mile Road. Ms. Smith, can you present the proposal before we go into public comment?
Yes. So, the request this evening is to rezone 17020 East Ten Mile from its existing zoning MU1 Neighborhood Mixed Use to LI Light Industrial. And this is based on the request, which would be the next step following the rezoning, to be considered for a special land use for a wireless communication tower. And as you'll see from the planning review letter dated December 26th, this parcel does abut a light industrial zoning district, existing light industrial district, to the east of the property. And then, the planning review letter was was reviewed based on the conditions that the zoning ordinance sets in considering a rezoning, that being consistency with the plan, so how it aligns with the city's master plan, consistency with the ordinance, based on the intent and purpose of the zoning, consistency with the street system, so the surrounding context, and then, as well as public services and utilities. And then it's also looking at what is the existing form and how that aligns with the proposed zoning district. So, we invite any public comment on the conditions of the review.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Does anybody wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move into new business. Ida May, consider a motion with a recommendation to City Council regarding the rezoning request for 10, I'm sorry, 17020 East Ten Mile from MU1 Neighborhood Mixed Use to L1 Light Industrial. You're up again.
So, again, this evening, we are just considering whether or not to recommend the rezoning of MU1 and to Light Industrial. Again, we know that there is a proposed use, which is the reason for this rezoning, but that would be addressed at a later time through the special land use and site plan review process. So, what we are considering is, is this site, does it meet the criteria for a rezoning? And is it conducive, again, to our overall vision of the city and the intent of the zoning ordinance? And I do find that because of the surrounding context and that it does abut not only a parcel that's owned Light Industrial, but a region that is owned as Light Industrial, that it would be a reasonable request to consider. And it does meet a number of the conditions of the Light Industrial. It is not necessarily the, the existing building on site is more in alignment with the MU3 district. For example, there's a zero-built lot line. However, it's not a building that's designed to be retail or pedestrian-oriented. It is truly, and, and so the, the reason that it was zoned as MU1 is that it's because it does have a building that is a zero lot line. However, if you do look at the existing conditions of the building, there's no window transparency, there's no entrance off of Ten Mile, and it's not a building conducive to retail. And again, based on the neighboring property and region being Light Industrial, there is also validity in the request to be considered as an extension of the Light Industrial district.
Wasn't there a cell tower there at one point before?
There was previously, which I believe was for Comcast, and it was removed. At this one time, they would be looking to add a cell tower for Verizon. And they have presented a preliminary layout, and it would be able to accommodate a cell tower based on our setback requirements and the screen, decently from the public right away. So, there is a potential for the proposed use to be moved to the site.
Mr. Myers, do you have any input here?
I don't, other than I would recommend that we accept an LL, a Light Industrial, due to the properties that are much larger onto the east of it. And we only actually have one property to the west of it before you get to a main street. So, I see no real reason why we should not give this a strong consideration for building a unique situation and a request for a tower in this location that previously had it there under a different set of zoning ordinances.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments, concerns, questions?
Chairman DeHunt, I just have one question, concern. On page 2, excuse me, under the use and zoning compatibility, if you go down to the applicant is requesting to rezone the P1 vehicle parking portion of the property to the B1 general business, and then it's, they're saying that it was in order to be able to construct a self-storage facility behind the shopping center. And knowing the area, I don't see a shopping center, so I just find that confusing. Is that something that needs to be left in there, or can it just be eliminated?
I do apologize, Commissioner Sasek. That is a sentence that should have been eliminated entirely.
Okay.
That's not relevant to this.
Thank you.
Application.
That's all I have. Thank you.
What, you didn't see that shopping center? Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I have a couple items. So, I agree with everything that you said in terms of the use of the property and the cell tower. To the east of, to the east of this spot, first of all, let's get into the zoning. My zoning map's a little old, but I think it's accurate. So, I'm, you are right that it's zoned Light Industrial to the east of it. However, to the east of it is a bus parking lot for school buses. And if I look at the East Point Master Plan, future land use map, so this is the vision that we went through with the city in 2019. And on the future land use map, it's that area, like that bus is, the bus parking lot is termed or colored for public, quasi-public. And that, that spot is probably the last spot that's, it's, it's listed as regional commercial. And it's, it's in the section of the Grashit corridor. So then if I take a look at the same document, and I look at the definition of Grashit corridor, and just read a little bit about it, it's, it talks about this area should be consistent with streetscape amenities, mimic DDA lighting, but use different banners. Like, this is, this is the end. This particular parcel is the end of, of the Grashit corridor. And in the future land use map, this is not designated to be Light Industrial. So, the proposal in front of us does not align with the master plan. So, while I agree with everything that you said about that light tower would be good for this spot, it doesn't align with the master plan.
Commissioner, this parcel, I guess I'm trying to, I want to make sure we're talking about the same parcel, because this parcel does not abut Grashit. While it is in close proximity to Grashit, Ten Mile, it is abutting, I mean, it is along Ten Mile.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
If you look at Map 5 of the master plan, which is the potential intensity change areas, it shows the Grashit corridor extending exactly to the end of that lot, of that piece.
I see what you mean. So...
So, it's, it's a fit. So, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just, yeah, I've expressed my point, so go ahead.
Yeah, so, one thing that's important to note in this context too is that our zoning ordinance is more updated than the master plan. But the, the zoning ordinance was heavily guided by the master plan. And in fact, that, I remember that we contemplated whether or not this property should be zoned MU1 or MU3 based on what you're just discussing now, where it is very close to Grashit and could be an extension of an enhanced intersection at Ten Mile and Grashit. However, based on the existing context, Ten Mile is a different fabric than Grashit. And this was a smaller, the, the property to the west and the property in question both have smaller buildings and are smaller parcels. So, that's why the zoning designation looked to MU1 rather than regional commercial. So, you are correct that the future land use designation does recommend regional commercial. But then in looking at the existing context, the zoning designation was matched at MU1. But, again, a fut, the future land use map is a very important part of the master plan, but there are other considerations to be made in terms of the master plan and the future directions of the city. And I would be interested to hear from others, but I don't necessarily think of this portion of Ten Mile as part of the Grashit corridor. And the intent statement that you just read was more so catered towards the downtown area and encouraging the expansion of a downtown and identity and focal point of the Nine Mile and Grashit area extending along Grashit in terms of banners and lighting and making it more of a city core feel. But this area is a little bit different. And so that's why we also look to the goals and objectives of the master plan, especially in a rezoning too, to see how this fits. And so, some of the points that I pulled out in this letter was, again, as a use in question, as a request to be considered as more of, like I said, Light Industrial, I looked to how we discussed industrial in the master plan. As it abuts residential, I looked to how it might impact residential in our future plans for neighborhoods. And, again, making sure it wouldn't inhibit or counter some of our goals that we set in the master plan.
Are there any, if this was zoned Light Industrial, are there any, can you go over the, like, the setback and the other requirements? This is, the parcel itself is really pretty small.
Yeah, it is.
So, if it's Light Industrial, and a year from now, Verizon or whoever owns the property, and they don't, they don't want to put a cell tower, and they want to put a manufacturing plant in there, it's too small for that, clearly. What else can, what else can fit into that spot that would meet those Light Industrial zoning requirements? And I know I'm hitting you up, because I don't know the dimensions.
No, that's fine.
I just know it's small, and it's, it's a little unique.
If I could multitask better, I would pull it up on the screen, but I'll just read it for you. So, I did try to incorporate a number of these points into the review letter. But for example, the minimum lot size for Light Industrial is 10,000 square feet, with being 60. Maximum height of a structure would be 50 feet. But it does require a 25-foot setback and a rear yard setback of 10 feet, as well as side yard setbacks. And it's a lower maximum impervious surface. So, really, the redevelopment potential for another industrial use is very minimal based on the parameters of the design. Essentially, they would have to be able to reuse the existing building on site. So, with that in mind, I'll read through some of the permitted uses in Light Industrial. You can have a trade school, a, and then a number of items that are permitted in MU3 are permitted in Light Industrial. But again, remembering the size and layout of the building. So, I'll just read through some of the permitted uses you to Light Industrial, which would be data processing computer center, manufacturing facility. Again, that does require a significant area, unless it was like a very small, like, manufacturing center, such as like the refurbishment or a furniture printing shop, something like that. Packaging and distribution facility, reuse facility, self-storage facility, solar energy, testing, experimental research facility, transportation logistics warehouse, wholesale facility. So, to me, this would be more in line with like a Light Industrial office-oriented. Maybe it's, again, it could be a small warehouse or logistics transportation. There were a few number of vehicles. There were a few number of vehicles. There would really be a limitation used based on the size and the redevelopment potential based on the setbacks.
But in all actuality, somebody could not come into, somebody could not buy that parcel of land and develop a new building on it because they can't meet the requirements, our minimum requirements. Would that be an accurate statement?
I would say that unless it was a very small and vertical building, it would be very difficult to redevelop that into the, a manufacturing or other industrial use that requires a structure.
What was the minimum, minimum square footage on a building in, in light industrial?
The parcel size is 10,000 square feet, which this meets exactly at 10,000 square feet. But again, you would either have to reoccupy the existing building as is, or it would have to be built to comply with the setbacks. So there is a 25-foot front yard setback and a 10-foot rear. And the depth of the site is, I think it's about, let's see if it's on. I believe it's about 100 feet. Is that correct?
The building itself?
No, the site. Linear.
Oh, the, okay, along Ten Mile Road.
And then deep, the depth of the parcel.
Mr. Maris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, there's a number of things that could be built. You're talking about a building that could be as long as 65 feet as a potential, and then the width of it, it could be established. When I think of light industrial, you have to remember the new days are coming where light industrial would be establishment of, of technology, could be built both as a, as a training facility, as well as a development processing place for parts and pieces for technology. Another one we've seen in other cities has been such small plants for powder coating equipment of smaller items and a private shop that runs powder coating as a system and would require a light industrial and a, a ventilation system that would meet that. You could go vertical with that kind of a system, and we've seen it being built elsewhere. So there's other types of, of light industrial designing coming into the future that could easily be fit in a, a 40 by 60-foot building that could be multi-story, if necessary, that would capacity, give you a productivity of light industrial projects.
I'm just looking at this lot size, and I can't think of anything you could put there. Um, at all.
There's also one other option that considers if it gets into a light industrial, that it could be bought out and par, partial with another piece of property to the east in its future.
Well, the way our schools are shrinking, I can't see them needing any more space for their bus garage.
So as you can see, if you can see on the diagram here, one possible redevelopment. But again, there needs to be space for parking and part of this proposal. Let's say we're not considering a wireless communication facility. Let's just say we're looking at this as a redevelopment potential in meeting, in allowing for preserving the vehicle entryway here. Half the parcel would be used for vehicle access and then parking, right? And then we have the setbacks of at least 10 feet, side yard, 25 foot from the front and 10 feet from the rear. So that leaves about 83 feet deep. And then, oops. So it could be, again, more like a, almost like a warehouse or storage structure, a small warehouse or storage structure, if it were to be redeveloped.
Very small.
So that is the potential intensity of the redevelopment. But again, it, it is supplemented with the inquiry for a wireless communication facility, although it's not conditioned upon that.
I just, I'm struggling with the fact that the future land use map that the city approved, that planning commission approved, city council approved, has that zoned as part of the Grashit corridor, and this decision could override that. I'm struggling with that.
I will say, you're absolutely right, this is part of, it is, it is a part of the future land use map that designates it as regional commercial, but this doesn't inhibit it from being a regional commercial use. In fact, many of the uses permitted in regional commercial are also allowed as a use of permitted use or special land use within light industrial. So in that regard, it still does allow for the regional commercial uses.
Did you know there was a tower there before?
I know.
And we, you know, and all these plans went into place when there was a tower there.
Well, the, but the point of a future land use map is to say, here's how I want the city to be. There is a tower there now, which there was at that point. However, in the future, we hope that it can become something different. That's what the future land use map, that's what it says. So, that's where I'm really struggling on this one. I agree with everything that everybody said, but that's not what was approved through this body, through city council, and when, you know, there's a whole process that goes behind that, so.
Does anybody have any other?
I, I just think that we've heard some of the proposed possibilities, just due to some of the site restrictions. And even though we're saying future land use, what would be able to go into the space? And since it has housed the tower at one time, I don't feel that we're negating development. I mean, that's just my own personal opinion, because I'm just listing what could go there, but will it go there? It's just a small sandwich piece, and if you say future land use, but what could you fit in that criteria that is going to give a futuristic experience to East Point? I mean, I know we have a region along the corridor, but that is over a block away. And I don't see that impeding any other Grashit activity that might happen near Ten Mile due to just the scope and size of the lots with the setback requirements. That would be my perception.
I'm going to make one more point on this, and then you guys can discuss. On the future land use map, it's defined as regional commercial, or it's listed on the map as regional commercial. The definition of regional commercial is, is intended to allow for a wide variety of retail and commercial uses. I mean, I don't have to go any further. That's, this is neither of those, though. And I know I'm getting literal, but that's what the, that's what the master plan says.
Yeah, if you want me to elaborate, I mean, you're absolutely right, I included that in my review as well. Although I do believe that this wireless communication facility is actually, is going to complement what's already there. It's not going to prevent that building from being able to be used for another retail or commercial use. And so, again, this rezoning doesn't inhibit it from aligning with the intent for this to be contributing to the commercial in a variety of retail. I see this as contributing to that intent statement of allowing for a variety of retail and commercial uses.
I hope I'm not out of line, but as memory serves me correctly, the cell tower went in, it was in for a while, but prior to that, there was like three or four satellite dishes there, which were taking up a whole lot more space than what the cell towers wind up taking. And we're not recreating something, we're just replacing something that did exist, but the previous cus, cus company, I'm sorry, has basically said, well, we don't want a cell tower there any longer. We're just replacing something that already existed and helping, I'm feeling, the, the company that's been in place for some time in that location, just being able to continue to offer a service.
And if I may add to that, the location is actually going to be slightly modified, as you'll see in this preliminary sketch. But again, that'll be finalized in the site plan review. But the reason that it's modified is, again, to align with the setback requirements from residential. And it still preserves about almost 20 parking spaces, which could then further support the reuse of the existing building on site. So it doesn't, right now, this is not, this is only proposed to take up about a third, maybe not quite a third of the existing site. So it does allow for an additional use. Again, that's up to the intent, like, the property owner, but it does still allow for the potential for an additional use. And we do allow for some, like, there, as I have said, a number of commercial and retail uses which are allowed in a number of our commercial districts, especially MU three is also allowed in light industrial. Including places where you can both, let's see. So, like a veterinary clinic, which is in, is allowed in industrial, studio for dance, art, photography, smoking lounge, retail, lodge, professional office, pet grooming. Some temporary uses are allowed, microbrewing, distillery, winery, nursery, greenhouse, fitness club, community incubator kitchen, bar, restaurant.
Ms., Ms. Smith, may I interrupt you? That lot is just too small for 90% of what you mentioned. It's just an, it's a bizarre little piece of property. Let's just call it what it is. It is a bizarre piece of little property, and I don't know what you could possibly do unless it were merged with something else. And not to try and ride roughshod, I'd say we give these folks their cell phone tower. And God bless, somebody move into that little building, and we were able to reuse that too. I just, it's just such an odd-shaped building.
So, I think to Commissioner Broll's point, though, it's going back to what we've already approved, that part to be, and now we are saying that's not what we want it to be. So with that in mind, and bottom line is, so if we rezone it, and should something come up later that we need to rezone that parcel again, we have that option.
To rezone the specific property? Yes, that is definitely an option that would be brought forward, unless we went through another zoning ordinance update that was supported by our updated master plan, which is to come in this year. That is always a potential for the property owner to pursue a rezoning.
Good point, Busha. Moving on. Does anybody have any other comments, concerns?
I, I do, Chair. Under the rezoning review, there was a response to number one, number two, and three, but there was no response to four. And I, I, I just had an interest story about the, the health and safety of this tower. And, and yes, of course, we had one there before, and that's, that's well and fine. But because of this day and age of the, the high rise in cancer that is among us, is there any safety issues that we should be concerned about with reference to another cell tower? Do you know? Would you know?
I do believe we, so, in our zoning ordinance, we do have specific use standards for a wireless communication facility, and, which is why it's also a special land use to give further consideration to that use. And I am not an expert on the effects of wireless communication, oh, absolutely. But I will say, we do try to give consideration to that, and I know that is why we require a setback from residential, from residential, so it would be a, a, a directive.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Chair, we also, on installation, are required to provide by the company all the details of specs on each of their power towers that they're going to put in, and before they can add any more, it has to stay within a limited perspective of how much radiations of, of grabbing information it takes. So it's going to be limited, it can't be continued, so even if they add it, they have to pass approval of the building department's plan and, and the state standards. And then, sometimes over the years, that people would like to add more to their towers, and that's also restricted as well.
Under the environment. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody wish to make a motion here?
I'll read the motion.
I'll support it. Do we, do, it lets, so I wanted to read it, and then you can support it.
I move to recommend approval of the rezoning for the MU one neighborhood mixed use to the L one light industrial, L I, L one light industrial district for the property of 17020 East Ten Mile Row, parcel ID number 021429106002, to city council based on the following finding of facts. One, the request for a wireless communication facility, cell tower, offers a neighborhood amenity serving neighbor, nearby residential, commercial, and industrial properties. Number two, the request is an extension of the neighboring zoning designation to the east. Number three, the request does not encroach into residential districts further enforced by the use and buffering standards of a wireless communication facility, which is to be addressed in the site plan in special plant, land use review phase. Number four, the request will not be disruptive of the existing layout of the site nor surrounding properties based on the proposed layout. And number five, the request is not in conflict with the goals and objective, objectives of the 2040 master plan.
Support.
The tongue-twisted, tongue-tied.
We have motion and support. Just write in, C motion from Brishet.
Right, exactly.
Oh, no, we were talking about the number five. The request is not in conflict with the goals and objectives of the 2040 master plan.
It'll be soon adjusted, next year.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
No.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item B, considering a motion to approve a site plan for 21704 and 21718 Kelly Community Housing Network. I always get happy when I have, see these people and their projects. Ms. Smith, can you lead us into this?
Yes, so, for those who were on the planning commission last December, you may recognize this site plan and this request. I am pulling it up on the screen to kind of talk through the Um, I am pulling it up on the screen to kind of talk through the changes and why they're, um, before you this evening for a reapproval. So in the site plan that was presented last December. You may remember that the curb cut was further, um. Further setback from the intersection of Kelly and Chover. And the parking was in the rear so that the buildings, um, were placed differently. The layout was slightly different and the main reason was where the curb cut was to access the parking lot. However, there was, that layout was contingent upon being able to move. The support wires for the electrical poles along Chover. And because that is no longer an option. The applicant CHN Housing has resubmitted an updated layout. That still preserves the quantity of housing units and the style and the ability to add modular units. That will be, um, the same goal and purpose for the end user. But the layout has, has modified and so now the, um, curb cut is slightly different. In a different location and now the parking, vehicle parking is along Chover. Um, so this still does align with, um. Enhancing and adding housing units along Kelly. And contributing to the walkability of the corridor along Kelly. Um, and so we not only reviewed this site plan based on the standards of the ordinance. But we also reviewed it based on the conditions of approval that were set. At the December twenty twenty-three planning commission to align with the original review and intent of the review. Um, so that's how we prepared the site plan review for this evening. So, um, I can go into more detail, although I just didn't wanna be too repetitive based on what was already discussed. At a prior meeting. But the conditions are, the conditions of approval, um, are listed. On the site plan letter that was prepared for you. Under the chart conditions, condition assessment. So some of those were being, you know, saying to move the barrier free accessible parking space. One, one space to the north to be closer to the barrier free unit. That was, um, preserved and actually even now. Brought further closer based on the layout of this parking lot. The maximum per, previous lot coverage is seventy percent or less. And actually, it's further enhanced by the proposed layout of this parking lot. To preserve the green space in the rear, um, and between the buildings. Um, and then the, there were a few conditions that were, I can go through these conditions if you would like, but. Just in summary, they do align with. The majority, if not all of the conditions set. There was two that were highlighted based on this chart, for example, combine the parcels. Another was to, um, ensure that the facades. Did not use only vinyl and that there was, um. That they revisited the quality of the design along with the facade materials. And so that is why I passed out the supplemental renderings this evening for you. Because the information was submitted recently. Which shows that, um, there is, the architectural preservation is preserved. And we can look through together what the facade material is proposed as.
Can we have the man from Community Housing Network, cause he's got his lovely art.
Yeah, he has renderings as well, so.
He can show the public too.
So this, this is not a rendering, sorry. Th- this is not a rendering of the, uh, of the buildings that are proposed, but it's a photograph of a very similar. Project that was built by the same modular constructor. Uh, so you have here up on the screen, um, exactly what I have here in my hands. Uh, this is a project that was in Grand Rapids. Um, and this project used the, the same siding that we are proposing to, to change to. So the original proposal, uh, that was, uh, conditionally approved last December. Uh, included, uh, vinyl siding on the sides and, and rear of the building as well as on the front of the building. Uh, and during discussion at that meeting, um, we proposed potentially changing just the front. To a fiber cement siding product. Uh, in conversations with our modular builder. He suggested that we simply switch all of the siding on, on all sides of the buildings to a fiber cement product. Uh, because the, the cost difference would be relatively negligible. And it would be better for, uh, long-term, you know, the, it would wear at the same rate. So that is what we have, have changed to now in the new plan. Uh, so it's a fiber cement board and batten siding, as you see on the front of the building. Uh, with fiber cement lap siding on the sides and rear. Uh, and some, uh, some white trim board there as accents to sort of break up the, the large, uh, expanse of lap siding. Additionally, the, uh, the parcel combination has been completed. As of, uh, a month or two ago, so that condition has been satisfied as well.
And the last, um, point that was also called out in the, um, outstanding revisions. Is the front yard setback, which, um, was further clarified by their engineer following this review letter. So at this point, I don't, I do not have any further concerns. And I find that the site plan, um, creatively has addressed a significant barrier to the project. And they'll still be able to move forward with, um, a very cool modular project. That will be a really great example in the community.
So my only question would be, so we've got the same two buildings?
Same two buildings.
Same number of parking lots?
The parking spaces have reduced, but it's actually in greater alignment with our zoning ordinance. So prior, there was an excessive number of parking spaces. And now it is in alignment with the, uh, parking, so it doesn't need a waiver.
Okay, so it meets the parking requirements for zoning, yeah, great.
Anybody have any concerns? Somebody ready to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You gonna read it?
I can always make Rich read it. Let me find it.
As long as he doesn't charge by the word. Okay.
I. I move to issue reapproval of the December second, two thousand twenty-four site plan for the development of two modular quadruplexes. At two one seven zero four and two one seven one eight Kelly Road. Parcel IDs fourteen dash thirty-two dash four zero two dash zero three zero. And fourteen thirty-two four zero two zero three one. To be finalized administratively based on the present, uh, the presented site plan modifications. In its effort to meet the conditions of approval on the December seventh, two thousand twenty-three planning commission meeting. And zoning ordinance standards. Yours was a bit longer, that's true, totally true.
We have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
While I totally support this project, I'm going to abstain because I was not involved in any of that.
That was a conditional yes, though.
Yes.
So is it abstention for the record?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
When do you break ground?
Uh, we will be breaking ground within the next thirty days.
Wow, yay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C. Ms. Smith?
Item C.
You're awfully low talking tonight too, by the way.
Oh, my, sorry, my, I'm sorry, my microphone's off. Okay, so the zoning, this is just a preliminary discussion to talk about. Zoning ordinance amendments that we recommend based on experience administering the zoning ordinance. And the topics can be categorized into four. First is reassessing our land use designations to avoid further confusion. And make a further clarification between event space and retail or office. So we can dive into that in a minute. And then the other one is in regards to our lighting, um, regulations, specifically. Our regulations for non-conforming signs, I'm sorry, I. Well, there's, yeah, I meant to say as well as our sign ordinance. So in discussing non-conforming signs, uh, sign definitions for wall sign. And, um, the way that window signs are calculated and the location of pole signs. So we're looking at two things here. The first one is, again, like I said, to better clarify and distinguish. The use of event-based businesses versus office and retail. So during the, um, zoning ordinance update process. We wanted to be friendly to unique and innovative type of businesses. Two of those we classified as one business incubator and two experiential retail. Um, and so, again, business incubator really does align as it functions with other office uses. It essentially becomes more of an open workspace with multiple different businesses. And they may or may not be a service, they could be a service-based business, but they could also be a goods-based business. So it does blend between office and retail. However, both office and retail are permitted very similarly in our zoning ordinance. And so I feel as though that is already encompassed in the zoning ordinance. And one way that we've seen this be used in, in, um, conflict or have unintended consequences. Is how it's used in areas such as MU two and MU one, our Main Street mixed use and neighborhood mixed use. Where event-based businesses are not permitted or permitted, um, actually, yeah, it's where they're not permitted. So MU one along Kelly and then MU two. And, um, another instance in which that has occurred is with our proposed. With our existing land use designation of experiential retail. Which I can read. I did include that definition, um, in the memo that it currently reads as a structure or part of a structure. That offers retail experiences in the form of a class. Uh, experiences may include art, pop-ups, live music, virtual reality, cafes and lounges, large video, and large video display walls. Experiential retail, um, uses are open to the public, yet also available by appointments. And so, again, this, we are not taking away from businesses. That are more specifically classified by this land use. But we're trying to better distinguish what event-based businesses are. Versus retail and service-based businesses. Um, so I would be happy to, if we wanna pause before I jump into lighting, if we wanna discuss this further. But again, what we are recommending is to remove these land use designations. And what we could do is, um, incorporate the intent of these into our. Definitions of retail or office, if we feel that's necessary, and I can read those definitions as well.
Ms. Myers, you have an experience, you have experience in dealing with things like these. I'd love your input.
I'd like to see us put these into definitions more definitive and, and leave them out of distinctions that people get to. Mismanage when they want to apply for business licenses. And that's what's causing the administrative difficulty. Cause they're trying to use it as a broad-based definition. And then when they go into business, they're really modifying it to something else. And if we can keep those definitions clean and separated, then we can require them at the licensing standard of the city. To give us a very clean use of the building instead of a broad use. And then find out that they're borderline not using the building as they ask it. And that's so, we, we really see it easier to, to administrate a distinctive definition. Instead of a, a breakdown of each of the types of business styles. Cause people are interpreting those business styles to their own rendition. And we already have them in the same zone as, as a use. So it's becoming convoluted when people want to mismanage their businesses. To justify how they wanna open, what they really want. They'll write what we need them to say and then they'll open it with a slight.
Slight.
They, they agree.
So you wanna hold people's feet to the fire?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Ms. Smith, do you have the definitions that you want to present to us?
Yeah, I was just gonna read retail, um, just to clarify that, again, we're not removing. Uses that are true to the intent of retail. But our definition right now is an establishment engaged in the selling of goods. And merchandise to the public for personal or household consumption. And rendering services incidental to the sale of such goods. So we, if we need to revisit that, um.
Alright, read it again for me, please.
An establishment engaged in the selling of goods and merchandise to the public for personal or household consumption. And rendering services incidental to the sale of such goods. So if we feel that we need to incorporate maybe more of the service-based retail. Which is kind of what experiential was trying to do, like, classes, um, again, where you have maybe like yoga or art classes. Although we do have studio as another use, but again, that, I'm interested to hear if we feel. To revisit that or if, if we're happy with.
The retail definition sounds fine to me. But I think we do need to have a definition for a service business.
We do have personal service establishment, establishments providing services as opposed to products to the general public. Including financial services, pharmacies, insurance, real estate, dry cleaning, tailors, salon, spas, wellness and similar uses.
I would like to know what a wel-, what is, what is wellness? What is different between a wellness spa? What is, between wellness, spa, salon, what, what is the difference?
Money.
Forty percent?
Yeah, wellness could be anything from, um. Diet nutritional, dietary classes, yoga. Even like other therapy, holistic health.
So wouldn't there, wouldn't it be beneficial to us if we had a separate definition for a. An educate, or a ser-, educational service or something that is meant to inform? Like if somebody wants to teach a pottery class or something like that, shouldn't we have something that is? I don't know if it's a service, though. Is, is education a service? Or do we need an additional definition to break it down? I don't know if it would be considered a service. Haircuts are a service, nails are a service. But is teaching a pottery class or macrame, is that a service? I don't think that it is.
If it's, if, if it's not in a class form, we do, so I would say if it's in a class form, that would be the service, like a training. If it's an open facility where people can come and go to do pottery, you know, sometimes you rent out, uh, a space in a studio. We do classify that as studio and we do have a definition for that.
Okay.
For that purpose, like if it is not the sale of someone training or leading a group session. Then we do classify that as studio.
My concern is, you know, we've got all these event centers that, Lord knows what some of them do. I, 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 most of them don't have a sign in front of them identifying the fact that they're even an event center. So I'm, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're not having. These places becoming things that they're not meant to be and doing things that they should not be doing. And either Ms. Holman has something to, no, she doesn't have something yet, alright. All right.
So, yeah, that's the first point of what we propose to amend in the zoning ordinance, like I said, remove the, remove the distinguishment for business incubator and experiential retail. And then next would be amendments to the sign ordinance. So, the first one is just defining what a change in occupancy is for non-conforming signage. And we want to just expand it instead of saying a change in occupancy to say a change in occupancy, which is both reoccupants, which is both a change in business type or business ownership. So, for example, if the ownership changes and now they want to update all of their signage to be in the new name, then they also would be required to bring their signage into compliance with the new ordinance requirements. So, they can't just update it, they have to bring it into compliance. Additionally, the second one is, there was just a phrase included in our definition of wall sign. Specifically at the end, it says, "This includes permanent window signs," and we would like to remove that phrasing, not to confuse wall sign and window sign. So, we want to keep those two separate. And then the third thing we would like to do is clarify, right now, the size of a window sign is calculated based on the coverage of that window. So, we say, right now, one-third of the total window area. However, we want to, we want to further clarify that to say one-third of the total window area per street frontage, so that if you have a building with windows on different sides, the business property owner can't just cover one side of the building with signage, further blocking and making that side non-transparent and essentially a wall for a huge sign. So, we'd like to clarify that per street frontage to align with the intent to keep things transparent. And then we want to modify the pole sign placement requirements from being ten feet from the public right-of-way, which public right-of-way in the way that our city built is typically the sidewalk and property line, and change that from being ten feet to the curb line. So, the reason for this is we've actually had a couple businesses now who want to reuse an existing pole sign, but the location is too close to the sidewalk. And then they would have to eliminate that pole sign entirely and bring it ten feet into their site, which does create some dead space on their property. Additionally, the intent of this is to inhibit blocking the clear vision triangle and making sure you have enough of a setback from your sidewalk. You're not infringing or blocking or causing incidents where someone will, like, walks or bikes into a pole sign. However, again, we have a number of signs that are already built, and so that is a very expensive thing to have to remove and build a new pole sign. And again, you're creating dead space on your property. So, we already allow this along Kelly Road for it to be calculated ten feet from the curb line, and we would like to make that the standard all throughout the city.
Going forward, but we would allow the people that have it now to keep it? And then going forward, we would require things to change? Or are you asking people that are doing it now to change?
People who are doing it now, there is a number of circumstances. For example, if it's a change in occupancy like we just talked about, or if it's a special land use or a non-conforming use that seeks Class A, all of those are then required to bring all of their signs into compliance, and that pertains to existing pole signs as well. And so, we have had an applicant submit a variance request for their pole sign. And so, one of the conditions of the variance review is, are there sp-, special circumstances in which it needs to be applied to this specific property? Or should instead you consider an amendment to apply to all properties experiencing the same circumstance? And so, we do feel, and that's why we're bringing it forward now, that actually what's more fitting would be to reassess our setback requirement for pole signs.
I would also like to bring forward the idea, so there are certain buil-, buildings in the city that businesses occupied, and instead of putting signs up, they painted stuff on the wall. I'm thinking of a, the old Circle K that went out of business, that they turned it into some sort of automotive paint store, that it looked like they, some child's art project came along and slapped up the name of something on the side of the building. And then I'm also thinking about a daycare center on Grashit, not far from Cloverleaf, that took a brown brick building and turned it into a green cartoon sign. I don't think those images add anything to our city. Is there an orange one? And I would love to see that type of thing go away. Obviously, whatever has happened has happened, and we can't do anything about that, but it does not enhance the aesthetic of the city by having somebody paint over a brick facade and put cartoon characters up there. Yes?
To give you a, a lead on Rajit's sign, pole sign issues, we have two now that have been on the table that, where they're actually located now does not meet our zoning ordinance. And our zoning ordinance would require it to be ten feet from our right-of-way, which is the front of the sidewalk, or the closest side, furthest away from the street sidewalk. So, they've had to move that twenty-two-foot pole four feet, instead of leaving it at six feet. And that's why, if we could unify our zoning to be at least ten feet from the curb instead of the sidewalk, these people wouldn't be having to try to move their pole four feet. And that the cost of, of doing that, that's, that's the issue that we're seeing repeatedly happen as we continue to request that any new business having to take their illegal signs or modified signs and bring them to our standards of our twenty-three zoning ordinance, that's one of the setbacks to the cause. It's expensive. One, they still have to bring it to twenty feet, but it's, it, the big cost is moving the power, the, the power system, the foundation, and the wind shear development of putting it in the ground only four feet away. And so, we see this being somewhat business-friendly, believing it where it is if we just changed our ordinance to ten feet from curb right-of-way instead of sidewalk right-of-way. And that's the recommendation on that idea, is, is we're really typically only moving it a very few feet, maybe only, if the base of the pole is already eighteen inches, we're typically moving it very, very little. And so, that's, that was, we are recommendation on those. And again, we're trying to continue to support all of our business districts in window coverage that it really is per window of, of a limited signage, instead of making this thing, if we're following our master plan into the future and we want more walkable space or our travelable space, and you can't ever see inside anything because we've covered them all up, it becomes, again, less attractive to walking in and seeing that you're walking by a pastry shop and you can go in and get something. So, that's why we're seeing them close sidewalls up and then transposing it as part of a, a wall sign instead of a, a transparency window sign. So, if we can clean that up in our definition and our amendment, we can, we can easier define for people, customers and clients what they really need to do, uh, to, to keep us a cleaner. And your subject about painting on the walls, I think that really has to address mural issues and who's in charge of overseeing what is a mural versus what is a business sign painted on a wall. And, and that should be distinguished in how we define how that gets done between the two. And the definition should be definitive of what is a painted wall sign versus a mural and, 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 and be done.
Well, do we have a requirement for colors that businesses are allowed to paint their establishment?
Yes, we do. Uh, so, colors for signs, we have regulation on that, and we also have building facade colors. But we do address murals within our sign chapter, our sign article. So, the information presented there, let me pull it up on the screen.
I love the mural that's painted on the East Town Bar.
It's nice.
Isn't it beautiful? I love it.
I like murals, but I don't like murals if they're being used as advertising. But I like that, that's a great mural.
So, we do, so to John's point, to the really official's point, we do discuss murals, and the definition says that murals shall not be signs. But one thing that we could further distinguish is that wall signs cannot be painted. And so, that does prevent the advertisement of the business, though. So, like the business name or logo couldn't be painted or included as a mural. But the way that we currently discuss murals is that they're permitted in all zoning districts with zoning administrator approval. In reviewing a mural, the following criteria, criteria must be applied. Be well-designed and incorporate high-quality materials that enhance the overall appearance of the site and will not adversely impact safe and sufficient movement of vehicles and pedestrians. Colors, though vibrant, must be complementary and harmonious with the exterior colors of the building's structure, as well as consistent with the chosen theme. Its design, construction, location cannot obscure or detract from the significant architectural features of the building, nor should the building's architecture be altered to accommodate the mural, and then for routine maintenance of the mural is responsible of the building.
For the life of me, I'm trying to find out how the devil, that green cartoon mural was ever approved. It is, no, it, it is very good, and it's nice that they painted the name of their business on the side of the wall. Okay?
I think the distinction is, it shouldn't, a mural should be a mural.
Yes.
It shouldn't be an advertisement or worded, uh, as, as a name of their business.
Absolutely.
So, my, my question then for the commission is, first of all, are you in agreement with these proposed amendments? And then, second of all, would you like us to also take a, another look at the way we discuss wall signs and murals and prevent there from being painted wall signs?
Hundred percent.
Yes.
Yes.
I meant yes.
Do we just want to limit the size of a painted wall sign or just allow signs to be not painted?
How about we find out what other communities do? We, but we can chart our own cour-, course. But we can also use what they do as a baseline and then put our own fine shamrock spin on it.
Why are we always going to other communities if we want to be our own?
If we want to have a baseline, it'd be nice to know.
Make your own baseline.
I will say the baseline, generally speaking, is to not allow painted wall signs.
I do not like painted walls.
Uh, then, I like that. Yes.
So, we can include a definition of what that might be like?
I wish you would have talked about this about a year or two ago. Maybe three.
Um, one other thing I would like to bring up at this time is if we feel as though we need, if we want to reassess the way that we define event space.
Yes.
Um, so, in this memo, our current definition is included, and we also included an example from Hazel Park, um, in which, I guess some of the differences is that we, uh, the Hazel Park differentiates special event versus event space. So, special event being celebration, ceremony, wedding, reception, corporate function for similar activity where food and drink may be provided for the benefit of someone other than the property owner, it takes place on a periodic basis. Versus an event space, which is a facility where special events are permitted to occur. And I guess I bring that up to say is, there are a number of facilities that may have special events, right, like churches, educational facilities. And so, it's not to prevent that, but it's the reoccurring, or a space that's, um, reoccurring special events. So, that's one way we can further differentiate. Another is that we could require there to be additional services or infrastructure onsite that is part of the event space. For example, I know some ordinances require there to be a kitchen or kitchenette or set further standards for restroom facilities. And the reasoning for that is to prevent it from just being a vacant, empty room that then gets rented out. So, it aims to service more banquet events rather than, um, an empty, bare-bones event space.
I'm all for having more infrastructure in some of these properties as opposed to just one big room with round tables and chairs. What, like what infrastructure would you want? Bathrooms?
Bath, ba-, yeah, obviously bathroom.
I think most places have a bathroom that I visit, because people have to have, well, take care of the laundry needs.
But a kitchenette.
But a kitchenette, um, as a requirement, some of these spaces can be, you're limiting. I mean, you could say if they had a commercial kitchen, then, you know, they might do some codes and guidelines to follow, but when you say they have to have a kitchenette, you know, not quite saying it's a commercial kitchen, so where's the health department to comply with what they're going to do in the kitchenette? So, I think if it's a commercial kitchen, you already got the guidance from the commercial kitchen, but to say it has to have a kitchen to be an event space, it's not necessarily going to determine an event space because of the kitchen or not, it's going to bring it to health regulations.
I, I don't, I'm not, I would not be in favor of requiring a kitchen from the aspect of, there's a whole catering community out there that are happy to cater events, right? So, but I, I agree with bathrooms, I'm just trying to understand what else you guys think that should be out there.
Ms. Myers? She's correct in a couple of things I, and I'm supporting of. One would be, um, a physical access for disability. Would need to really be part of that. Some of these buildings are old enough in the city that actually have a, a smaller door than is, is acceptable, or the exterior doors on the rear are oftentimes walking in instead of out, and they would have to be modified to bring that to acceptable standards. And, and if the building can cover over a certain number of people per activity, then when we're talking about bathrooms, we're talking about two subjects. We're talking about enough stalls in each of those bathrooms for that accommodation and the handicapped access to at least one of them. That also meets that accommodation size. So, I agree with that. It, it, it puts a restriction and a restraint on someone who wants to use it as a facility for public activities. And, and those two are significant enough to re-, hold, hold them to bay of what they're going to use it for, because they would have to bring those to a current standard of the two thousand fifteen codes, or, and, and probably within a year, they'll be the two thousand twenty-one codes.
And they would have to be ADA compliant, too.
And they would have to be ADA.
Bury free parking.
Yep.
ADA compliance, wide door jams to get a wheelchair through.
Yep. And, and we won't be able to restrict the alcohol issue because there's a different licensing structure in that as it comes with whoever's using the facility, so we can't hold it to the owner. So, that'll be adjusted situation that we can't modify, but we can guard and we can govern. And the other suggestion, or when we're talking about our signs, is our city should be permitted and, and is als-, allowed to say, "If you have a business operating, you need a sign to publicize," instead of leaving them unidentified. We can, we can add that and, and make that a part of all of our responsibilities. As a, a building gets, um, both a CFO and a certified clerk's licensing, it should be identifiable from the outset of the building, uh, uh, according to our zoning ordinance of signs. it should be identifiable from the outset of the building, um, uh, uh, according to our zoning ordinance of signs.
The, the licensing for, what, what, what is the licensing for? I know it's the COA for, but what is the licensing for? A business license to operate?
That's correct.
So I'm ju- I'm just wondering, like, if you had a, after a couple private clubs or fraternities, do they need a business license?
Yes.
I know they need a COA.
They do.
They do? Okay.
There's only, I think there's only a handful of three or four in this city that don't need a city license. And that's because they're required to have state licenses to operate hospitals and doctors or, what's the other? Um, the clerk has four, four categories, I think, that don't need a city license because they're already required to have a license by the state to operate. And they govern their, their performance in that. So everything else in this city has to have a, a operating license as a business.
I like the idea of having a sign. If you have a business, have a sign. That's, it's still intuitive, but if it's not in, if it's not in our, our, uh, our zoning ordinance, we should, that's a great idea. And I really like the idea about window coverage, um, across all fronts. Because I have seen before where like somebody's trying to meet their quota and they have the entire windows completely covered.
Yeah.
That one over there is not. It's like, yeah, ridiculous. So that's, that's a great idea. Uh, I have one follow-up question. Um, what was my question? Oh, just on the, um, non-conforming signs, change in occupancy. Can you just discuss that just real briefly again? Sorry, I kind of missed part of that.
That's okay. So we currently just say a change in occupancy. So for example, uh, section 10, 108, non-conforming signs, um, a non-conforming, oh, if at any given location, there is a change in the occupancy, all non-conforming signs must be removed. That's how it currently behaves. What we're proposing is that we say what a change in occupancy means. Because sometimes that is interpreted by others to be just a change in use instead of a change in business. So what we're proposing is if at any given location, there is a change in occupancy, whether it's a change in business type or business ownership, all non-conforming signs must be removed. What that doesn't say though is a change in property ownership. So that continues to remain the same if the business remains the same. This is just saying that it's both based on type and business owner.
Or business. Yeah, I, that's a good point.
And that allows us to change the, the dynamics of all the city signings when that process activates. It could be a grocery store, but it's being run by a different company now. And they're leasing the building. It could be a pharmacy that is changing from one pharmacy to another pharmacy. But now that it's changing, the old signs that don't meet our zoning of 2023 need to be brought to that standard.
Yeah. And I will just add, we currently have a condition, and this is pretty standard language, that non-conforming signs may not be expanded, enlarged, or extended. Non-conforming signs may be maintained and repaired so as to continue the useful life of the sign. Normal maintenance includes the painting or chipping of a faded sign, replacement of faded or damaged surface panels or repair or replacement of electrical wiring and electrical devices. So if a business is there for a really long time, we want them to update and maintain their sign and be able to continue replacing the face. But what we don't want is to extend the life of non-conforming signs. And that typically happens when there's a new business owner and they look to replace all of their signs.
Who, who's, what's driving this amendment request? Did somebody request it or are these just your ideas or?
This is, well, it was requested by, uh, John Myers, but it came up because we have a business, our, our building official. But we have a business that changed, um, ownership. And they, it's the same business type, but new business owners. And so they were interpreting a change in occupancy to be a change in use. And we acknowledge there's a little bit of ambiguity. But the intent of it was that change in occupancy being covering all changes in the types of occupancy. Um, so we just feel that since we're already asking to make some amendments to the sign ordinance or the sign regulation and the zoning ordinance, that this would be the time to further clarify that.
So what I would say is this is all good. Everything I heard is really good. As much as I like the ideas, I like the initiative. Like, thank you for bringing it to us so that we can make these changes. These are great, uh, great suggestions.
To give you some support, what we've done since I've been here, is I've, I've done a sign registry of the entire city. So every business that lo- is located in the city, with the exception of three blocks left on, on, on 10 Mile, um, we have a photograph of every sign on every business in every building. So when they say it's not been here, it's been here too long, we just recently put this up. We get to document now that I've been here, how long it's been there. So our, our department is now in the process, besides the vacant registration that we've talked about a minute ago, we'll talk later. We've now begun to remove illegal signage. And these things that is not allowed to be here, that is temporary, that has never been registered. That has been temporary, that has continued to be put back in, feather flags, banner signs, things that haven't been registered. If we can clean them up and we can clean up the streets and the neighborhoods from the distractions of those, then we can begin to find out which sign was never posted correctly and which sign was never legally had a permit to be put up in the first place. And therefore it doesn't meet our current zoning. And then we can go back and register. So we started at the, at the core value of, of getting a base product of what's going on in the city. So we're just about completed with the entire city and every business having all the signs on that business. Now we can register and determine what needs to be corrected, what businesses are vacant. And in our ordinance, if you have a vacant building, every sign that's there needs to be removed. It doesn't need to be covered up and painted or taped over with black paint. Uh, it needs to be taken down and properly, uh, dismantled so it's not being used, you know, inappropriately. Same with pole signs, so that if they're not being maintained by a vacant building, we have the right to ask them to remove it until such a, that another business takes place. But that is the process we're in right now.
So essentially, all the definitions that are being asked are dotting the i's and crossing the t's. Giving you the tools that you need to be effective in your role.
It's allowing people, as she's explained, it's allowing us not to have someone translate or interpret part of a rule to their benefit and say, we don't deserve to do this because we don't meet that requirement. And so we're trying to clean up those definitions so we have a clear path so we can, uh, get ready for the next 25, uh, master plan.
Okay.
So along those lines. I know the city's getting brighter as well, um, with certain types of lights that I see more and more going up.
Rope lights.
And put around signs too. But so are we going to be able to tackle that as well?
Is every, are now, any, any window signs that they accidentally didn't pay any attention to and put them on the outside of their buildings, we get to remove.
But what about just?
If they're inside them, we don't have that authority at this point in our ordinance to take down window signs that were mounted on the inside of the building. So those we get to begin to take apart. We get to also mandate other signs that haven't been maintained, uh, that have been op- in operation for some significant period of time.
All right. So are we going to tackle just the rope lighting?
Nope. We'll attack the lighting that is too bright for people to drive by because the reflection on, on the sides are, are reflecting in the wrong direction as well. So the, the brightness of those lights have to not be a distraction to a driver or a walker.
But doesn't the ordinance state that we do not allow for rope lighting?
Around windows.
Around windows.
Around buildings.
Like the one across the street? Or the one over here?
Outside my window usually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the ones all over Kelly.
Yes, so the answer right now is.
10 Mile?
Right.
More and more are popping up.
Right. So what we've done, and this could come into my report, what we've done is started with temporary signage, getting rid of it, removing it, challenging people to get rid of feather flags, banners, and balloons that aren't qualified to not have a permit, that are restricted to having a permit for only 30 days and only three times, four, four times in a year. So that's stage one. Then we'll go to lights, uh, and get them ready by the spring. And we mandate that we're going to have to ask them to remove them without permit because we don't permit them at all.
And how do you know? So like during the day, of course, you don't know. Do you, do you need someone at nighttime to send you pictures?
Yeah, that would be delightful if you have them. The other thing that we're working with.
I've got a whole bunch.
Go ahead, send them to me. The other thing that we're trying to do, and we're working in collaboration with building a program with the police department and the fire department in a, a re-calculation of the neighborhood block watch. Instead of making it about, I'm complaining about my immediate neighbor. How do we take those block watch members and expand their distance to multiple blocks or multiple areas? And then assist us in our code division of what they're concerned about that don't meet our ordinances that they can begin to look for. And once they can tell us, then we have a second set, a third set of 35 people out there taking a look at eyes for us. And we can begin to target what we're looking for by every district that we're working in. So as we create the districts for each of our, of our, um, neighborhood block watch with the police and the fire department, uh, the idea is to give that each, those each districts, a code officer that they can begin to communicate with. Not for the, about complaining, but how to help us look for what we're looking for in their district. And we can get support to help again. So those lights and those pictures would be delightful.
Are you going to get a motion? Oh, Lord. Does anybody have anything else in discussion with the definitions? Have at it. March. Take your time. Get everything tight.
Unless February, you can be ready. I mean, March.
That way everything can be. All right. Moving on. Item D, election of chair, vice chair, and secretary. Don't everybody jump at one time.
I would, I would like to nominate John Chairman, John DeHunt to be chairman again.
Second that. We have motion and we have support. Secretary, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, who motioned? Michael?
Mr. Sasek.
Oh, motion, do you support him? I'm all excited about lights and I'll just come back later.
You're giddy as a schoolgirl.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt, do you accept?
Yes. Thank you.
Moving on to vice chair. Vice chair.
Nominate Mr. Sasek.
I'll second that. We have motion, we have support.
I heard a chuckle across the room.
I had it too, so.
Good. Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek, do you accept?
I accept.
I'm gonna nominate Sheila Julinski for secretary.
Support.
I'm honored for this 13th nomination.
Nobody's secretary's like you.
I'm sorry, who was that?
I nominated, I, I think we had about five supports.
Mr. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Don't be so excited, Wanda.
I love it.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
I accept.
You have a choice.
Thank you. I haven't. That's why I don't fight it anymore.
Just surrender to the void.
God bless you, Jeff.
Uh, item E. Do we want to table item E? Okay. We'll table it for the, the, uh, February meeting.
Support.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry.
You want to make the motion? No, I just.
That wasn't your motion?
No. Do you want a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table the review and approval of the planning commission bylaws to the next scheduled meeting.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion, we have support. Secretary, please call the roll. Yes. Oh.
Oh.
Make it to the February meeting. February meeting or?
No, March.
March, March meeting.
I'm in the motion to the March meeting.
March meeting.
There is a February meeting, isn't there?
There is. But we're going to table to March.
We've just tabled two things to March.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're going to have a party in March.
Ooh.
Pre-Saint Patrick's Day party? Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business. Moving on to training and reports. Mr. Myers.
Do you have a list of training?
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna jump to the last page of the packet that provides, um, a list of some training resources. Uh, the reasoning for this is again that 2025 is an important year for the city of East Point, specifically in that this will be the start of the master plan update period. And so we just wanted to take this time at the beginning of the year to provide kind of a reference point to be used throughout the year as, you know, if a topic comes up or there's an idea you have for the city that you're interested in and you want to find case studies or you want to learn more about, this is kind of the baseline of resources that we recommend for communities in Michigan to reference and programs, um, to reference as we go throughout the years, throughout the year and the master plan update. Um, so we didn't necessarily do it by topic, but we did it by reputable sources to reference. And I would recommend using the online version of this because we included hyperlinks. So it'll lead you right to the RRC or redevelopment ready best practices. Um, there's also some self-paced trainings through RRC as well as MSU that we included. Um, the MSU, if, if for those, especially our newer members, if you haven't yet participated in the MSU Extension Citizen Planner Program, I would highly recommend, um, making that a priority for 2025 and speaking with, um, Ian? Yeah, speaking with Ian or Kim to get you signed up, uh, because there is a fee with that as well.
There's scholarships?
There's scholarships to cover the, to assist with the fees. So that's something that I would like to, uh, just acknowledge and bring up at this time. And then again, we did try to include some, uh, important topics such as, um, topics or news, uh, not news sources, but, um, reports and studies as it relates to housing and why it's such an important part of the master plan. Um, and then the last two additional materials is a fact sheet on what the Open Meetings Act is and what it entails. Again, just in case you're interested and you want to refresh your memory. And then this is a more technical nerdy zoning, uh, reference. But the last link is the annual report of Michigan court rulings for planning and zoning, which is, if you want to read that, um, sometimes fun to understand how things are being interpreted or challenged and the rulings throughout the year. So have fun with that. But, but really I would recommend looking through again. We are an RRC community, so looking through the material. Um, they do a good job of, uh, Um, they do a good job of, uh, not only assisting communities and city staff through the process, but public-facing information as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and if you do participate, please let us know because then, um, we can put that on the list and, uh, get credit, credit for the city for having participated in the training.
Um, last thing I will say is Ian actually brought up some interesting trainings and webinars that are happening starting this month. So, uh, following this meeting, you can sign out, forward some of those events. Um, and then some of these that we include, like the Planet Zen link, I mean, really all of these, I mean, you see some cog, APA, um, the Michigan Association of Planning, they have monthly newsletters, even Eagle that you can sign up for and select what topics you're interested in. And it will send, um, newsletters to that are fun to keep up with. So that might be a nice New Year's resolution to read more about planning.
Okay. We're past New Year's.
Aren't you?
So there's her. Could you imagine a party at her house?
Uh, it would be good because her husband's a Buckeye.
But he's perfect. Mr. Myers, do you have anything for us in your report?
I knew there was something I liked about her besides her smile. It was her husband's fan for being an Ohio State Buckeye. That, that's. We're on the same page. That's right, and after yesterday, story's all different. Hey, listen, uh, I'm excited, uh, to see that all of you have come back and joined the team. This is such an important time and each of you have valuable tools to bring to the table over this next eighteen months. So, um, I'm thrilled to see you. I got a laugh when you were talking about the two thousand and nineteen, uh, master plan and you read through it and asked the questions. Uh, Commissioner, that's exactly what we need. Uh, in, in two thousand and thirty, we should be asking, how close did we get to finishing the two thousand and twenty-five master plan? I'm convinced that if we do this job in this group right here, like nobody else in the entire city can do, we can cast the vision for planning to take care of our seniors, to addressing our housing issues of health and safety, meeting the demands of our state regulation of, of, of not enough housing in our area. We could override the conditions of our, of our medium-income conditionings and plan for the future, and I mean future two thousand and forty master plan, that allows us to see a thriving, wonderful east, uh, East Point city growing like we haven't seen it in a long time. And, and that's why you guys, in my opinion, as I've looked and watched your backgrounds and your histories and your interests, is very, very viable to what we're doing. In the meantime, all I get to do is be the building official and play with cleaning up the mess so that you have a clean slate to work with. So as we've talked already about signs, we've begun to clean up all the, the bantering of, of other signs and illegal signs and temporary signs and signs that need to come down of vacant buildings. We've also then addressed our vacant properties aggressively. Uh, we now are watching people walk in the door getting mad because they think that we should leave them alone. Uh, and that's all right because what we want them to do is come to the table. Once they come to the table, the team that's sitting in front of you has been able to take one step at a time, as you noticed. We have, uh, progress with, uh, big boys and the property there. And that was designed by, make you come back to the table and figure out what the first step has to be, second step has to be, third step has to be. And I think we'll be seeing, uh, from my office officially, we gave them approval to demo the building as of late afternoon. And so we'll begin to see that building come down, probably in the next week to two weeks, uh, at the earliest and maybe in the middle of January, depending on what their time schedule is. But part of what we're trying to do is get every business owner and property owner of a vacant building inside the city, building department, and ask them what's going on and what it's gonna take to get it done. We have made some modifications for, uh, our, our, our vacancy applications and our vacant, uh, uh, ordinance. Uh, and in the next couple of weeks, because we are RRC, we have some fee schedules to change. So we're going to present to the city a challenging request that we change the way we look at fee scheduling vacant buildings so that the fee cost for registration of a vacant building continues to climb. So they no longer wait for a magical day or do nothing with the building and use it for storage and, and save it. But we want them to either get the building active and be used for something productive to the community, or we'd like them to release it so that somebody else who could use it would begin to make it viable. So we're going to ask the city to let us use a lot more teeth in our department and clean up all of the vacant registrations. We've now have seen probably, um, eight businesses walk in the door who've received our twenty-eight, our twenty-eighth day letter that writes them a, a violation penalty of five hundred dollars for not registering their building at all. And so now they're willing to start figuring out what they can do and what they should do. So there's the report, we're starting to, to go back through the city, find out what's going on in our business districts. How do we clean it up and how do we get ready to cast the vision of our twenty twenty-five master plan for this city that could carry us into the next generation of, of families coming forward? So thank you for choosing, stick around one more round to see if we can understand what we can do to help, how we can rebuild and how we can re-revitalize a neighborhood. And what you did, uh, Commissioner Michael, at tonight is exactly what we have to do every week, is make sure we're living and building off of the master plan. If we don't build off of it every year, every six months, every five years, we won't be getting any further down the road. We've driven a lot of maps, but now it's time to build the foundation behind the maps. And I'm excited to be here with you, to see us move forward and see what happens when we're no longer here. But we build a foundation so solid that the next generation of families, next generation of elderly people that live here, the next generation of tenants that operate here, have such a solid foundation, we won't be the armpit of McComb, we'll be the pride, and that's what we should be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the second hearing of the public, does anybody wish to be heard?
Gary Meyer, and again, East Point resident. I noticed on the CHN Housing, is that the pictures that are gonna be the housings? I mean, to me, they look like a building from the eighteen hundreds in these small towns. And they put sightings and new front door on, and to me, that's what it looks like. I think, um, I'm not sure if that's what the buildings are gonna look like, but you go through all these little small towns and that's what you see in the eighteen hundreds. Thank you.
Well, that's what they put on now.
And asbestos back, man. Does anybody else wish to be heard?
That's what it's gonna be.
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident, congratulations, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Um, you guys all do a really great job and apparently you have a lot of homework to do in the coming year, which is, you know, I'm always impressed with, um, the amount of work that you do. Um, Commissioner Broll, I kind of agree with you, the confusion with the master plan. It seems like there are different maps for different situations. Um, the future land use map is what I thought we always go by, but apparently there's another map that was done back in two thousand and twenty-three that changes pretty much everything that was in the original map from the two thousand and nineteen master plan. Kind of circling back to Keystone Auto, um, that is currently and future land use as regional commercial, but apparently in the new ordinance, that is part of the downtown area, which is surprising to me because that entire block from Cushing to Ash and then Ash to, I think it's Cousins, is pretty much all automotive, oil change, auto glass, uh, repair. I really don't envision that as downtown now or in the future, or I don't know how many years from now. Um, I do appreciate you taking the time to go back and review the October third meeting. Um, I was present for it, I have gone back and watched it a couple times. That third condition, Commissioner Moody had started speaking it. I believe Commissioner Julinski said, nope, we're gonna strike that. And Commissioner Broll said, yes, item four is now gonna be item three. So that condition about public parking was removed and it makes sense because that block there, why, why would we want random people being able to park there? It doesn't appear to be a downtown area where people are going to restaurants and need extra places to park. My concern as a, as a consumer would be if I have my car at that auto repair shop overnight, which happens occasionally, I don't know if I'd be comfortable having, knowing that anybody could park there at any time um, throughout the night, that that parking lot is open and available for partygoers at a party on Chestnut Street, I think you mentioned. So anyways, yeah, if you do go back and review it, I think it was about the one hour and forty-one minute mark that the motion was actually read. And then my second question with that is if, when you approve a motion, if that motion gets changed before it goes in front of city council and they approve the changed motion, is that legit? I mean, does that, is that all right? I, does that happen? I don't, you know, I don't know. But anyways, I wish you all a happy new year and drive home safe tonight. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna shift around a little bit. I'm gonna leave Kim out till the end. Ms. Bishadlin.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Ms. Julinski?
Oh, Happy New Year, everyone. We'll see what this year brings and we're gonna, you know. The bucks over the ducks and now on to the tuxans.
I'm gonna hop over you, too. All right. Ms. Moody?
Just, uh, just Happy New Year to everyone. I'm eager and excited to, to work with, uh, Mr. Myers because his passion is just amazing. So this is going to be something new to me, but I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Myers and his entire commission. And that's it. Happy New Year again and everyone be, be safe going home.
All right, jump to Mr. Myers.
Make up already? Uh, but, uh, I, I trust that you're blessed all year long and when you find hardships, that you know where to turn and get the hope and encouragement that you get when you need it the most.
I'm skipping you, too. Mr. McCain?
Good evening, commissioners, good to be with you all, missed you in December. Um, you all have a happy new year and, uh, you're excited for some great trainings in two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, looking forward to continue to working with you all in the new year. Thanks.
Mr. Albright?
Welcome back, commissioners, and I just wanted to take this time to also publicly thank and acknowledge of the building department, uh, for the proactive nature that the building department seems to be going in. And I'm looking forward to helping out any way that I can with enforcement, whether that's through either the three district court or the circuit court. Thank you.
Mr. Stokes? Happy New Year, everybody, I look forward to working with you for another year. Ms. Naylor?
Happy New Year and, um, hopefully everyone stays safe as we go home tonight. And I look forward to developing, uh, the master plan and supporting the city moving forward.
Mr. Sasek?
Happy New Year, everybody, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. And, uh, I have registered for the MSU extension and I've been starting to explore it. So now that the holidays are over and hopefully I'll have a little more time, I can get more involved in it so that I can get that training done.
So you can be extended?
Thank you.
So, Happy New Year. It's a new year. It's all I got to say. I just, you know what, it's time to take care of yourselves, put the past in the past. And it is my unfortunate duty to have to turn my comments over to Mr. Broll. And then we will go to Ms. Holman and Ms. Smith. Mr. Broll?
Well, um, uh, today will be my last meeting. Um, I started on this commission, um, my first meeting was September first, two thousand and eleven. Been on the commission, I've been, uh, fortunate to be appointed and then reappointed and worked with a bunch of great people, both on the professional side, city council appointing me and then of course this body. Um, I'm moving out of the city, so that's part of why, um, my appointment was running out. And, um, so I'm moving, but, um, the city's in, in good shape with, um, I think I voiced over the last couple of meetings, some of the things I really feel are happening. Um, Mr. Myers is, I, I love the drive and what I'm hearing. So no long speech, um, yeah, so it's been, it's been a pleasure and, uh, you know, nothing more. Thank you.
Ms. Smith? He says with disdain in his heart.
So, um, just wanted to point out that there is a special meeting, January twenty-third, because I made him a, I did not include that at the bottom of the agenda. So please be aware that there is a special meeting this month, January twenty-third. And with that, I also share with a heavy heart that this is also my last evening and in this role. And I'm trying not to get emotional, I don't know I am, but I just have really, really, uh, appreciated the time that I've had with East Point and the trust that you've put in me, even when I wasn't here every month with you at these meetings, but in the city hall office for my weekly office hours, um, as a zoning administrator and helping with, um, ongoing special projects in the city. Um, I've just, the city has definitely made an impression on me and especially working with this commission and the city staff here, um, including Ian, Kim, um, Mariah, there's so many, our building permit techs, Jackie and Roseanne, our rock stars, the building clerk office, and really the way that we've been able to collaborate and work together on, I mean, not just it, working towards the master plan without us even realizing it or intentionally doing so, but, um, making concerted efforts to even work on the master plan and, uh, just how much passion people have, uh, for the city that they live and work in. So, um, yeah, it's been an honor and I don't think this is a goodbye. I think I'm just going to be transitioning, um, into a, I'm accepted, accepted a job with a transportation-oriented firm. We do other work as well, um, so I will still be Michigan-based and I'll probably, um, cross paths with you at another point in time.
Ms. Holman? How about you?
There, there is a card somewhere up here, we wanted to say thank you. Um, you've been amazing, you and, uh, and John Myers have done incredible things collaboratively to move some of these big projects to fruition that hasn't happened in a number of years. I've been here five years and to finally see the big boy moving, that's unbelievable. To see that CHN is building, that we have some of the other projects, that you have gone out of your way to find ways to, uh, support redevelopment and new development in the city through incentives, through other programs that will support them financially. And I know you hate goodbyes, so we'll see you soon. Um, these are not cut flowers, this is a, uh, I forget what they're called. But yes, you, and your love of plants, so thank you, we love you and we're gonna miss you.
With that, can I get a motion to close the meeting? Let me make that one. Let me make that one. All right. Motion to close.
Support.
We have motion and support, secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sasek?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes, Chairman DeHunt?
Vote no, do we have to wait and wait him out and not let him go?
No, you're overvoted.
Yes. Thank you.